All right, it's five thirty. I think we'll call a meeting to order. Chair in the Brown's absence, I will chair this meeting. And please ask anybody to turn off or silence their phones, please. Uh, and then we can do the play. Uh, want to call the roll staff?
Brown, absent prior notice, Fenland.
President.
Black.
Here.
Yoder.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Nixon.
Here.
Creaky.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
And Heather.
Here.
Next, I would welcome consideration of the agenda. Uh, if there's a motion where we'd like to have a discussion on any of that.
Like the motion that we approve the agenda is presented.
Motion made by Commissioner Hader. Seconded by Miller. All in favor? Uh, all in. Same sign? No one? What you care is. Uh, a lot of interest. Uh, I will declare, because I did at the last meeting, uh, due to my involvement with the planning mission as an alternate, uh, and voting to send this onto us here. I, I consider that myself to be, uh, of interest and I'd like to refuse. Uh, you guys didn't have a discussion from the consensus on that.
So you think you've had the citizen planner training recently too, is that receiving conflict or an actual conflict?
It's perceived.
I don't think you would. Okay, okay.
And I think. I don't think there's a difference in the last one.
So.
No, but just the process is you guys need to kind of decide that you've agreed that it is. And we didn't know. Nope, okay.
So.
Consensus.
I would, uh, point out that I serve on the board of Leland Historical Society.
Oh, what?
So I, and that's one of the three parties in this overlay district, but, uh, I don't have any financial interests, but I am not being paid. So. I declared my announcement and you guys can say if that's a conflict or not. And I don't think not, but I, it's my responsibility to tell you.
Were you or are you involved in any decision making regarding this action from this time?
Hmm, I don't think so.
Uh, so you.
Well, I, I would agree that Mr. Fennel would have a conflict, um, but Ms. Bailey, um, to your point, so. Sitting on the committee, you've never had a vote or, uh, discussion, um, on this project that's on the agenda tonight? As far as the Leland Historical Society.
Certainly, we've talked about the, uh, issue going forward.
At, at those, at those meetings or.
Is there overtaken at those meetings?
Yeah, I don't think we decide, decide anything at those meetings, we're just watching the, uh, evolution process.
Oh, so it's our decision making necessarily, then?
And I mean, and in my opinion, uh, certainly our voice mine and I think we had a consensus there. Uh, for me, I'm huge, but I, I don't see that there's necessarily an issue here. I appreciate the, the honesty and letting you know, but unless anyone else does have big issue, I think we can move forward.
Yeah. But there is no compensation or actually taking at that point around the state, so that's not what I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we will move into the public comment section to this meeting. Uh, appreciate everyone coming, uh. I'd like to reiterate some background rules, uh, comments will be learned in three minutes. I would like, uh, and I would ask any members of the public that speak speaks respectfully. Uh, we also like to remind commissioners that it's not our purpose to respond to public comment during that time. And so there won't be discussions between commissioners or you, you can ask questions to us, but we're not going to respond during public now. So just want to make that clear. Uh, and with that, uh, I would welcome publicly say your name before you make a little comment as well. Uh, with that, I'm opening the floor and if you please keep on sitting up here so we can get, uh, the mic back on for your voice.
Good evening. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my name is Rick Kaler. I am the treasurer at the old art building and I'm one of the people helping to shepherd along the process of the cultural district overlay. Other folks with me tonight are Kathleen Ackerman, who is president and president-elect of the O A B. Sarah Mills, who is our executive director. Kim Keller House, who's the executive director of the Historical Society. And also Dusty Christensen of Mansfield Land Planning, our consultant. Uh, I just want to give you a really quick, quick synopsis of the timeline that this process has gone through. Um, it was October of twenty twenty-four that we formed the committee to start looking into this matter. Uh, the three groups that formed to do this. By the Leland Township Public Library, the Leland Historical Society and the old art building. Our job is to request a zoning overlay amendment for the establishment of the cultural district overlay. We hired Dustin Christensen of Mansfield Land Planters in November of twenty-four. And in January of this year, we submitted our thirty-one page submission for the overlay application. Our first meeting before the planning commission was in February. And since then, we've met several more times over the next eight months after that. Our job was to prove to the township planning commission how our concept aligns with their township master plan. After having a thorough application, you have seen the seven points from the Leland Township master plan, where we demonstrated this alignment. The residents turned out in droves with enormous support for the overlay concept. And we only had three or four families in opposition over those nine months. We've made seventeen revisions to our original request, which happened over the following eight months. And in October, we could tell that we were on the one yard line, but we needed to touch down that night. So. We offered our eighteenth concession at the suggestion of Steve Scales. At which point he called for a vote to be taken and he and the other P C members voted unanimously to support our concept. We finally won. We hope that you believe this overlay district is also in alignment with the county's long range plans. And will recommend to the township board that it be approved as presented tonight with no further revisions. Recommended by Sam Simpson, Brian Fenland and Steve Scales of Leland Township Planning Mission. Thank you for your time.
I'm handing over to you.
You can bid.
This is a flat in Leland. Oh, this is a date of upper left hand corner of eighteen sixty-eight.
My name is Lynn Telgard. And I am one of the four families that was opposed to this. And the papers that I have handed out to you, I want you to just take a look at with me. There's so much that I would like to say to you, but three minutes isn't going to give me time. So I have an arrow pointing to the property that's in question. And on the second page, I have blown that little block up. And put a blue square around it. I own lot one, part of lot three, and then part of the lot eight that leads to the river. All the rest of the lots there, absolutely every one of them is being requested to be put into this overlay. They're all residential. This is about zoning. I now have the only property that will be left as a residential piece of property there. And this overlay will allow them to have weddings there, to have music, to have events, to have food trucks, to have all sorts of things there. Specifically, the language in this overlay is not specified enough of the do's and the don'ts. My fear, as I move forward, in a hundred years, in twenty-five years, these people will not be governing this. And if I know one thing, my husband sits on the P C board in Leland and has for many years. It's all about verbiage in interpretation. If it's not specified correctly and people interpret it differently, down the road, it will get manipulated. That's a fact. So my concern, this is zoning. I'm a resident there. I want to keep it as a resident. I don't want it commercial in my backyard. They haven't discussed parking. They haven't discussed so much in detail that through the years will be in my backyard. I don't believe that this was a letter campaign or should have been a letter campaign. Yes, there were a lot of people in support of the O A B. Take a look at the property in here that the O A B sits on. You've got in the block, to the left corner, black, uh, one, three, seventeen and thirteen is the O A B. Look at the size of this parcel that they are trying to get this overlay in. I have been told that the precedent has been set with Fishtown. Fishtown preservation was to preserve Fishtown. Thank you.
Hi, Dusty Christensen with Mansfield Land Use Consultants. Um, as Rick mentioned, I'm the land use consultant who's helped, uh, O A B, the Historical Society and the library with the proposed zoning amendment that you have in front of you tonight. Um, I'd like to just take a couple of minutes to talk about process and procedure with zoning ordinance amendments. Um, obviously every township, um, and village municipality within the county of Lelandau has their own zoning ordinance. So as it is, the county itself does not have zoning that it oversees over the county. Your job as a county planning commission is to review master plan and zoning amendment, um, changes within those various municipalities within the county and comment on those as they apply to their applicability, uh, and the way that the language works within the existing ordinance. Uh, the applicability of those ordinances and how they conform to the county's general plan and how the proposed ordinance or ordinance amendment would impact or potentially impact neighboring municipals, municipalities, either townships or villages. Um, your job is not to relitigate comments that have been brought in front of the township planning commission at this point over six meetings, uh, since February. We've had a lot of discussions about things that Lynn brought up like music, uh, food provision, events. And what she didn't mention is that those things were removed from the property immediately adjacent to the property that she owns. In the packet that you have in front of you, the potential for those types of land uses on the property that directly is directly adjacent to hers are no longer allowed. The plat that she handed out dates back to the eighteen hundreds. There may be platted lots, uh, that were put into place, uh, over a hundred years ago. Currently, the property that's adjacent to hers is one parcel with one address and one parcel ID of the county. Um, I hope that you've had a chance to look at the, the proposal. There is a master plan for the proposed overlay district that shows the existing and proposed structures on the various pieces of properties within the overlay district. The way that the zoning language is set up is that if a site plan presented by one of the applicants or owners of those properties conforms with the master plan that's in the, in the document that will be adopted as part of the zoning ordinance, it can then be approved by the zoning administrator. If that site plan shows anything that's substantially different, it has to go back to the township planning commission for the site plan review process. Where the planning commission and the public will get a chance to review any potential changes to that plan and their potential impacts to surrounding properties. Uh, I myself and the applicant group have worked very, very hard. We revised the zoning amendment document four times over the course of that six meeting process. Thanks, Brian.
Anyone else like to make public comment regarding anything on the agenda? Nobody?
Okay, we'll close public comment, uh, and we can move into staff comments. We can look at to, uh, then entertain a motion to consider, or I'm sorry, to, uh, approve the October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting.
I would offer that motion, but first offer a couple suggestions in a minute. Uh, the first page, which is page three of hundred and seventy-one, under my remarks. That second sentence that says he would have liked to have us seeing, I would get rid of that A. So it said, have seen a map indicating the zones where the tower would address. And I would insert after and also what areas of the township are not currently receiving good communication. If that is acceptable, I would move that we approve the minutes with those corrections moved for the meeting of September twenty-three.
October twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Correct.
So, okay, motion by Nixon, supported by Black, all in favor?
I.
I'm all of both. All right, we're just going to approve events with the changes that were suggested by Commissioner Nixon. Old business, there is none. New business is at this point where I will hand over to Proton.
What? Thank you. Um, I hope everybody's had a chance to read through this thoroughly and, uh, I'd like to go down through, starting with Francis down there and have people comment on what you read. And, uh, we'll go there.
And so, do you start?
Yes, please.
Um, I, I read through all hundred and twenty pages or whatever. Took a little while. The, uh, the report that I see from staff says that there are no conflicts with the planning, uh, the county planning level. So I really don't have any questions.
Thanks. I'm going to go this way.
Right. And again, to follow up, I'm just, it doesn't, it appears it lies. It's all designed in the order system. I will put together a plan, just to. Reason to.
I'll be honest, I've read it and I find a whole lot of things that don't belong in a zoning ordinance, in my opinion. Uh, preferences to how many people can be in a building at any one time and what can go on in that building. That's not normal to a zoning ordinance. That isn't even normal to ordinances of the community. Some of the acoustic requirements, the noise requirements might be appropriate in the community's ordinances, but they don't necessarily belong in a zoning either as references to amplified music, doesn't belong in a zoning one. I don't. I think it needs significant, this ordinance needs significant work to be appropriate as a zoning document. As to my feelings about the project itself, I like the idea of that, but I am offended that we're taking land that was zoned residential for so many years. And that the people around it will be adversely affected by this new occupancy. And had every expectation that they would be looking across residential property, would be adjacent to residential property. How are having this expectation basically from them?
Okay. Um, I did read through, yeah, short of it and, yeah, tons of minutes to be through, it seemed like there was a very thorough review, um, of the product and stuff. I myself did not see a conflict with our general plan at the county, um, regarding that as well. Um, and you can feel like the applicant sure put in a lot of work to accompany, um, a lot of the concerns, uh, that were brought forward, uh, and obviously, you know, I, I myself dealt with a lot of these instances in my own township, so I, I, I see the heartburn with it and I, yeah, hopefully we can hopefully resolve that, um, but as far as what's in front of us, I don't have any major concerns, um, one way or the other, yes.
I would share in much of the comments that my fellow commissioners have made. Uh, reading through that entire document, I didn't find any violation to, uh, uh, their master plan or their zoning ordinance. Essentially, I felt the intent of the language was to pretty much maintain the existing activities that have been going on by this group and, uh, protect that in longevity. But I have to say, I too have concerns for neighbors. Uh, in that changing one's ordinance to use an overlay district is is a critical decision. Overlay districts are not commonly used because they grant generally some benefit to the parties who request them, as you would expect. Uh, I guess that's not saying a whole lot. Yeah, but it can have a negative impact on those who are, uh, the recipient of that language. And so I would just add a comment that the, uh, proposal here, uh, seems fine. Due diligence is, is clearly evident and that people have sought tremendous community input. And, you know, it's not our place to substitute our thinking through what the Leon community wants to do. I would suggest that the board, uh, provide some assurance to these neighbors that their lives are not going to be disturbed as significantly as it's suggested they could be. Uh, I take some comfort in the fact that the language strongly suggests that what's been going on is going to continue to go on. And that the impetus behind this was to permit, uh, the continuation of that. I did kind of chuckle at some of the language about food trucks and noise. Those are so universal around the county that they seem to be popping up and food trucks themselves certainly are popping up. And I, I know you've attempted to, or they have attempted to make some adjustments for that and that they're not overwhelmed. But I have to believe that there have been food trucks there in the past. And, uh, that's probably given rise to the language that's there, so. I guess in conclusion, my remarks would be in support of, of this request. Uh, this language change, uh, I look with some caution at the overlay district. And again, would emphasize that the organizations that are responsible for enforcing this zoning ordinance are cognizant and continue to be cognizant, even though they're not over homing numbers. They are neighbors who need to enjoy their property as it was intended to be. I guess those would be my comments, Brad.
Thank you, Tony. Louis?
So in the village of Suttonspay, we have similar issues. I, I look at the North Park area and that could have been, um, all residential. That's where the farmer's market exists now. And to keep, um, property that's right on the waterfront in publicly excessive use, I think is a benefit in the long run. So I do agree with the overlay district, um, and wish them well. I think the other participants are, are definitely, um, aligned to try to be good neighbors and sensitive to the events that go on. Uh, the architectural plan with three small buildings right at the, um, front part of the Komski property would shield the, uh, use behind them without the water, so, but it seemed like a good plan. Thank you.
Comes down to me and I think I'll be the last one speaking on this issue. Um, I read this with a lot of, um, pardon my cold, if I get a little loud, I don't know. Um, a little, a little bit of combination when I read this. I, I empathize with the people living there. Um, I have some reservations as to the noise level that's allowed. Uh, for one. Number two, like I, I, I'm on the road commission and I called Brendan and had a discussion with Brendan because the road commission met with them. And Brendan sees a major issue with parking. And I too have been down there when things have been going on and, uh, your whole village is, isn't an issue with parking. I would, I would advocate that you even look into some off-site parking and have a shuttle bus to bring it to and from to, uh, cut down on the number of cars parking. I can visualize people wanting to move out of their house, out of their driveway. They can't even get out because they have to go find out whose car is blocking them in. I, I can visualize a lot of things. And I would hope that if this moves forward, that you take a hard look at the noise situation. Making sure the music does quit at ten P M. and not eleven or twelve. Making sure they aren't bringing coolers with beer in it, all the things you don't want. I can visualize the, the seawall along the river. It even mentions in there about boats tied up. There's the one dock. And I, I, I can see issues that unless the village addresses those issues, it could be a problem. And if I for one was living there, you would have an irate man. Especially, I don't stay up late. I sound like it, but I don't. And, uh, if that noise level was still going on, I don't know what I would do, but I definitely wouldn't be, uh, very friendly. I do like what you're trying to accomplish. I just, I have reservations. I hope that you'll place it. You'll look into the off-street parking. Brendan, that was one of the issues he said he brought up in your committee meeting, was the parking issue. I've seen it, I've been down there and they park everywhere they can get a car. And it sometimes isn't parallel on the street. So I, I would really encourage you to, to, uh, if this is to go forward and in periods it will, it's been well done as far. I did have some questions also on the, uh, the, the deed on the property, um, had some stipulations. Hopefully that you meet all the criteria that's on the deeds and you won't, uh, another issue I had was the food trucks. Um, hopefully they're, they meet all the criteria. Hopefully they're, they meet all the criteria, the health department for one, number two, that you don't have. You have a limited number of them coming in. And favoritism isn't always given to one party, but you bring a variety in, to be fair about that. There's a lot of things that need to be policed. And that's an issue I read as I read this. I'd be very disturbed if I was living there, but likewise, I look at the fact that you buy the property. I don't know how many years these people have lived there, but you buy it with the idea in mind, I'm in a residential area. I'm safe. Well, you're not always. But time does move forward. Changes can take place. We don't like all of them. But we have to live with it the way it is. And I would leave it at that. At this point, I think we're gonna, I would entertain a motion as to what we do with our comments. If somebody wants to make a motion, what we do with this. Do we think we should take a vote? I don't know.
Yes, would it be okay for staff to make, to staff any comments, I guess, that you might mean?
Yeah, staff comments. Thank you, Steve. You have any comments, Gil?
Well, do you want me to read the staff report?
Yes, sure.
This request was originally received back in October 28th. It was on the agenda last month, however, we did not have a forum. So the township reached back out to me and asked if it was on the agenda this month. They would like you to review and comment on the proposed amendment to the Leland Township zoning ordinance, cultural district overlay. Staff did not find any issues of greater than local concern.
Can you speak into the mic a little bit so I can hear you?
I'm going to jump to the history of this. On October 19th, Dusty Christiansen proposed a zoning amendment for overlay district on behalf of the Leland Township Library, Leland Health Historical Society in the old art building. All three of these parcels and proposed overlay districts are currently zoned residential too. And uses are considered legal non-conforming. Craft language for the overlay district was provided by Christiansen. After the public hearing in August, members related the draft of findings of effect until their next meeting's discussion. During the September meeting, members passed a motion for a findings of effect review at their October meeting. A revised application was then submitted on October 7th for a zoning ordinance assignment for the cultural district overlay. The proposed amendment would create a new district overlay for three parcels of land within the Leland Village area, which would allow for the continued use and expansion of existing non-profit organizations. The applicants have historically utilized their parcels for library, community gatherings, events, art displays, exhibitions, instructional programming, historical museum, research and archival storage. And see this proposed amendment as a way to formalize the continuation of these ongoing historic legally non-conforming uses within overlay and to reduce use non-conformity within the specific areas of the township.
Something in the motion?
Yeah, I moved that we send staff comments and our comments to the Leland Board with our endorsement of the proposal as presented.
We've been supported. I'd like to take a roll call down to as far as votes. Francis?
I'd like to have a little discussion on motion. Yeah, the motion, the motion implies that we're voting in favor of the action taken place in the townships. I have to vote. That's not the issue that's in front of me. The issue that's in front of me, in my view, is, is there any conflicts between what's happening in Leland or what's proposed in Leland? And the general plan of the county? And my my input from the staff is the answer is no. So I would like to see us not get embroiled or send anything that can be construed as us taking a position on the concerns that are in Leland. Those are the concerns of the Leland Plan, which not the county plan, which and most of the discussions that we're having are Leland Planning Commission issued. And I think we would send precedent that we don't want to set, if we have a motion that says we approve of, because it can construe, that's really our position. So I I would offer a friendly amendment to you. And that the the planning commission has reviewed, was been submitted, and has found no conflicts with it and accompanied by the conversations and records. But it makes it very clear that the decision at this level is whether there's conflicts or not.
I understand your concern and I fully understand your concern. This body has in the past done exactly that. And there have been some form of feedback from our townships that as a commission, if I'm not mistaken, that we also structure our comments with an endorsement or a non-endorsement of the plan. And so what my motion was is just that, endorsing what has been done. Sending it back to the township board, who are the body, is the body that makes that decision. But granted, it would be committing ourselves to a endorsed or non-endorsed posture. And I guess I would favor supporting what is being proposed rather than taking a neutral position in all due respect to what you said.
You want to vote no?
Steve is one. Go ahead. That was pretty much what Mr. Nixon says, pretty much exactly my comments. That would be my comments as well was I, to to your point, Mr. Creaky, I I totally respect that, understand it. But I would disagree with the fact that we have set up, that we haven't set up, that this would be set the precedent because we have in the past, like Mr. Nixon said, did endorse proposals and recommended them for, so. So and I know, I know sometimes we haven't and sometimes we have. So it's not like, you know, I don't think it's, we're setting the precedent by doing one way or the other, but we have done that in the past. And there's nothing, you know, my understanding, nothing, we're not in error by doing that, so.
I'm not suggesting we're in error and I'm not suggesting that we are setting a precedent. All I want to do is make sure that it's clear in the motion that this body doesn't endorse a or n a, what the planning commission has done at the township. That's all I'm saying there. Otherwise, it can get construed. And I'm perfectly well aware, most of whom we've talked about, we've proven, oh, we don't have this kind of debate in front of us. Right? Clearly, there's more going on down there than than we're usually exposed to. And I think it has to be clear, the position of the county planning commission relative to the position of the township. That's my comments.
We can run on down to each one. You you can state your mind as to how you feel about it, but.
There's some nuances here, semantics real. Like, we can endorse this because it's in compliance with the general plan.
Compliance, yes.
Without saying it's perfect. And that's our job to do. I think we can, we can do that. And if there's more issues that need to be resolved at the township level, then then you do that. But it's complies with the overall general plan. That's what our job to do that. And so therefore, we can endorse that without. I think I think it's one of the two ways.
I would be hard pointed to say that I in any way endorse this in the same token, I acknowledge that what you've done as township does not conflict with any of the guidelines and I think you're regulating some things that shouldn't be in zone. Just by principle.
Okay, Steve?
I I mean, I have no further, no further discussion on my part until, you know, I'm ready for the vote.
No, no further comments.
I've already made my comments. I think I'll let those go.
I agree, and that's part of the motion.
The motion passes on the fact that we followed the guidelines. What's that?
We haven't voted yet.
We have not voted, okay. If you suggested a roll call, I'd recommend staff call the roll call. Roll call vote on this, please. I'm gonna say no.
Younger?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Nixon?
Yes.
Creaky?
No.
Bailey?
Yes.
And Isaac?
Yes.
And Fennel, no states.
It passes. I just hope you will, they'll take our comments and you probably get the feeling of how we feel. I'll leave it at that. I'll turn the meeting back over to Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Blair. And if you don't want to hang out for us, meaning you don't have to. We have some other business to take care of this evening, so we can move right into new business item number two. PC 11 dash 2025 dash 41, Village Empire Master Plan. That's with Gil first.
We received this request on November 18th. Last day review, there's 63, 63-day review period of September 26th. Requested action to review and comment on the Village Empire Master Plan 2025 update. An open consent plan was distributed by the Village Empire Planning Commission on February 26th, 2024 to neighboring local units of government and Leland County planning. The Village Empire Planning Commission passed a motion in June 3rd, 2025 meeting informed the village council the recommendation to raise the draft of the 2025 master plan update to entities identified as statues for a 63-day review. The village council asked a motion at their July 22nd meeting to distribute the master plan update for a 63-day review period. Township planning commission had a public hearing on October 7th. According to the township minutes, no comments were made. And after the public hearing was closed, the motion below was passed. The Village Empire Master Plan Committee met from June to September of 2024. That was prepared with assistance from place strategies and input from the public gathered through a variety of community and outreach activities, such as a questionnaire and two community open houses. Section 3, the basis for plan review. Section 41 of the Michigan Planning and Aging Act requires a copy of a plan or extension, addition, revision, or other amendment to a plan be submitted to the county planning commission for review and comment. Down to policy guideline for the Lelandoff general plan. Does the proposed plan drive for greater cooperation with neighboring units of government? Yes, it does. Does the proposed plan include strategies for the preservation of rural small towns character? Yes, it does. Does the proposed plan include strategies for environmental protection, restoration, and management? Yes, it does. And does the proposed plan include parcels specific to future land use recommendations? The addendum to the plan includes a future land use management page 24, which includes recurrent patterns such as family, neighborhood. By staff comments, a master plan is the vision of how a community will develop over time, providing guidance regarding how areas should be known and standards that should be incorporated into the zoning ordinance. At least every five years after adoption of a master plan, the planning commission should review the master plan in determining whether to commence the procedure to amend the master plan or add a new master plan. This request is to review and comment on Leland County on the Village Empire Master Plan update. Village has prepared a draft update here as a supplement and addendum to the 2019 master plan. Page 1 includes the purpose of the plan update, which also is to supplement the following. The 2020 master plan amendment, addendum A, 2022 Empire Transportation, Transportation Plan, and the 2018 Village Empire Recreation Plan. Where the town changes were incorporated into the updates from the 63-day review period and law changes. These changes are in chapter 3 of the addendum. Due to substantial changes to the housing section, a second public hearing is scheduled for September 25th. Our planned master plan update to be inconsistent with the Lelandoff standard plan or the plans of adjacent municipalities in the county. Following the November 25th funding commission meeting, minutes from the funding planning commission along with this report will be sent to the township for consideration. The township is commended for the work updating plan.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, comments, discussion, Creaky?
Well, let me start off on a different note. I think this is an awesome document. It's one of the, one of the best that I that I've ever seen. Neither did you. And based on the comments of the staff.
Thank you. Isaac?
Very well documented. Just had some interesting observations. One is, part of this is I'm new to government and its pace and everything else, but in your short, medium, and long-term goals, six, seven each category, they had one listed high priority. Is there going to be any movement? The sewer system's been studied, so seven. Find some things that they can get some progress with, put it in as high priority, get some things done and then forward. Instead of keeping some tasks out of line. And it looks like the sewer, I know they want a grocery store. It seems these properties challenges to get it more density because of the septic systems. They really need a sewer system. They started wrestling. They said, if you look at Northport, Northport was a dying town. Put it in. And if you look at their statistics about population, Empire's flat, Northport's growing with population. So if you if you want to grow in there, there are, there are premises to bring in more people because a one-year-old to ten-year-old was nose-diving. Older population, it was basically, it was flat population, except interestingly enough, was the 14, I'm gonna get the ages wrong, but the 14, 18 was growing. So they want to bring in business. They were the only communities up here that has a, well, excuse me, the operational aspects of Cherry Republic there just expanded. So you could bring in people. If you get a sewer in, you can do that. Your Glen Lake School District, that's a power, powerful sale to bring people in. And then you could work on the couple of properties. I think those were long-term plans and more theoretical than and I may be wrong about that, the actual proposed action plan shovel-ready programs because of one of the sewer. But you could get those to go and really drive a community from where it indicates the depth and the breadth they went in there before. They could actually take actionable steps and move forward. So I would say, look at this, revitalize it a little bit, look at your sewer. Because you put it in a grocery store and if they want to have sandwiches or soups, anything else, you're gonna have trouble with that. So it's put the cart before the horse. It's like all the pretty stuff. And let's go to, let's go to the foundational issues that are gonna drive the community. And and the one question I had is I've dealt with TC and a number of years trying to put a restaurant downtown. The DDA was filed. Downtown Development Authority. But it's, it's someone that's hired to think of the marketing, think of the process, put these things together and then drive it. And not just get things passed, but actually to sell, go find people, market to people, bring them in. And maybe that's something that we should look at as a, as a county and do it along the master plan. You don't want to commercialize. I'm not suggesting commercialize everything, but we do need population, we need affordable housing, we need sustainability, people to come in and work in the community to support the rest of us. And until we look at these bigger issues, that's not gonna happen and we're gonna have trouble getting services from people. So I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Thought it was great. Every word in a couple things.
I can't add anything, just, just said. I think they did a great job and keep going and in this direction.
Yeah, I did get a chance to review it as well and I thought it was a well-written document. I really did appreciate all the data, the maps they had there, just the, it really encompasses what, you know, reading that document really gave you a good eye, a good vision of what the empire looks like. So I did really appreciate that. I did catch what Mr. Heider said about only one thing was listed as high priority. I thought that was a little odd as well, because I think it would be nice to incorporate more things that you can accomplish. You know, but aside from that, like I, I was really, really happy with the document and just how it was written and just easy to read in that sense, so.
Mr. Anther?
And I would echo what Mr. Creaky said. I think this is really an outstanding document. One of the better ones I've seen. I was equally impressed with their color use and their graphs and their charts. They're easy to understand, they're easy to look at and decipher information from. Particularly when it got into the housing plans that they host in there, those really brought to light much more the problem and in particular the objectives they were looking for that. If I was trying to find things to critique and complain about, really not complain, but suggest. I really appreciated seeing how they reached decisions on their vision statement by using guiding principles and the core values of the community. In fact, they flagged out their community core values on page eight. And it's on page seven, they referenced the core values and indicate that they'll be found later in the, in the, in the documentation. Or summarized, I think, in their words, in the engagement section of this plan. So when I went to the engagement section of the plan, I was unable to clearly identify what the core values were. And I would suggest that maybe in some way, if they can summarize what they mean by their core values and include them in that first paragraph under the vision statement and guiding principles, it might be helpful for the reader. You know, I think a developer or builder would appreciate knowing what the core values of the community are and then looking at the guiding principles. Have a good sense about what they need to construct. I did notice there were, I'm really nitpicking, there were a couple pages, three of them in fact, that were on their side and were not straight up and down. With today's technology, I would hope that you could go through a document and not have to turn it and, and try and look at it. But all in all, I thought this was a fascinating brand or a master plan and the Village Empire should be commended for the good work they've done.
You.
And I'd come back with very same comments. It was very insightful, well-written. I think the biggest difficulty they run into is their cycles of when the summer's here, they're, they're booming and when Labor Day comes, they tuck away some of the streets. And so it's hard to go and push forward with some of their things they would like to accomplish because of the population of their village once after Labor Day. It's difficult to do some of those things, but it was a well-written document. It was easy to read, easy to understand where they're going and where they're headed. So I, I enjoyed it.
Thank you, Sabah. Lois?
Yes, good consulting firm and motivated planning commission. They did it three months, which is amazing. So their first chart shows sixty eight years, some of their population is in the forty five to sixty five plus age group. Which, you know, and you, so you want to diversify that population and you have to have housing to do it, land costs are high. You can't get density without a wastewater treatment plant. And if I figured it out correctly, twenty three percent of their, their housing units are short-term rentals. They need to look at Village of Sutton's Bay's short-term rental ordinance, decide what percentage of your housing units are tolerable in a short-term rentals. License them and moderate it, you know, monitor it and don't give out any more permits and let them reduce the number just through attrition. As properties change hands, the license for a short-term round doesn't go with it. And it's happening in Sutton's Bay. It's starting to move down. It does, it does explain what missing middle housing is right here. Questioning that earlier. There's a focus on parking and policy and like all small towns like Leland and Sutton's Bay. There's never enough parking in two months, but to build big pools of parking just to accommodate two months doesn't make any sense. When I walk the Village in Sutton's Bay, I'm like daydreaming about, well, if you just move this little barrier here, you could gain two more spaces. Kind of sneak them in where you can. Don't let go of your parking spaces. And for heaven's sakes, tell your employees not to park in your customers' best spot. That's always an argument. I wondered about the, the, not M twenty two, you can't control the parking there, but on the side streets, their main street, if you did, it's a wide, wide enough right away to do nose-in parking on one side, curb side parking on the other, and then alternate on the next block. Because they also want to slow down the movement of traffic through the township. So you, you've kind of made cars pay attention and go slower. Housing, housing, yeah, housing, yeah, always housing. They were talking about the grocery store and, and launching a second location is a, is a really good strategy. Because there was so much argument about the now, that's the chain store.
Dollar General.
Dollar General moving in. So talk to Hanson's, talk to the Toms, talk to Olson's. To get them to do a satellite store in your town, you'd have to give themselves concessions and whatever you can to make it more tempting. But without a grocery store, without housing, all the other stuff kind of falls flat. Short-term rentals, battery control. And on their charts for general strategies, instead of talking about time requirement, why not list them as priorities from low to high? That seemed like that made more sense to me. And yes, put put that wastewater treatment plant and housing at a higher priority. There's also in partners that have a A, B, C, D convenient, and I couldn't see anywhere in the document but that net. So just a comment to send back to who is that? Who is that? I think that's enough for me.
Thank you, Lois. I had.
I'll make one more comment. Empire has so many beautiful areas and pictures. They do. They didn't include any pictures of their community and, and that was a disappointment. And yet, it might detract from the uniqueness of this document to include them. But it's very usual to have photographs of your community in your master plan. And I, I'm not sure I'm suggesting they should, but I hope they looked at that.
Thank you. Tom?
I really have nothing further to add in terms of the comments. I agree with most of them, if not all of them. There is only one comment that I really have is on page one thirty five of our packet. It says catalytic areas, which I think I understand why they're saying that. Catal is the cat, like, but it just seemed like a weird term to me. I don't know that I've ever heard that before. I mean, I think of catalytic converter on a vehicle or something, I hear that. So I, I couldn't figure, I couldn't remember because I was, it wasn't a typo, but that's, that's definitely what, and, and those are my only comments. So I would, I would entertain a motion by any of the commissioners to send this along.
And move it to the congratulate them on their document and send it back to Empire with our comments.
Motion made by Bailey, seconded by Heiser. Any further discussion or?
It's a little unfortunate we can't tell more or another congratulator we're making. Our level of admiration is not anything else for what they've done. Motion to panel. I'm not opposed to, but I think this is fantastic.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think Lois's motion essentially is our, our recommendation. Good job. And we agree, so.
Yeah, and it should be evident in our comments, I think.
I'll take it. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We can move out of new business into reports. I think the general plan committee met this afternoon and welcome a report from their chairman.
Our chair?
If you don't. Would someone like to, yes?
We've made it up to chapter six. Going slowly forward. Yeah.
Anything from staff? We're, we're on general plan committee. Do you have any comments? Person rec? This is back to you, Lois.
Okay, Miles Kelly has made the improvements on the disco project and now we're exploring the possibility of looking for sponsors on, on the equipment.
For the baskets.
The baskets, right. Yeah, which is common because of the parks. So we have a daily or a yearly sponsorship. Open funding the parks, so you can actually do more. We're looking at changing, there are a couple of tennis courts and the pickleball craze is pushing us for more. So why not change one of those tennis courts into a pickleball court? You know, if it turns out in a few years it shifts back the other way, if he's still down the court, you can just repaint it, yeah. And that would be a, you know, more cost effective than actually building more pickleball courts, which is part of our plan too. The Old Cellars Park, the Zee Ho's getting new changes. The grant application for the trail in the Veronica Valley. We sent a couple more endorsement letters in and moved it up further on the point score. I don't know if that moved us far enough or not, but set up a separate direction. The road commission was interested in transferring some property at Topch Road and six forty one to parks and we suggested that would be better if it went to the land bank. Adding more parks and the cost of maintaining more parks doesn't make sense. I would suggest only acquiring more property if it's strategic to the existing parks. So we sent that comment to the accounting mission. If it goes to the land bank, it becomes available for affordable housing use or some other thing. And we looked at a possible bench. So we have some supply for benches and consistency with the parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Moving out of reports, we have any communications, staff?
No.
And then that brings us to our end of meeting public comments section. Anyone who would like to make a public comment, you have three minutes. Please state your name.
Lynn Telgar. I'd like to thank you for listening to me to begin with. I'd like to also try and set some information straight that you talked about. Leland has fought very hard not to have food trucks for multiple reasons. So to have food trucks now on this property is a big deal for us. You talk about policing and it is in Leland complaint basis. So we pick up the phone, call Tim Cypher, our zoning administrator, or the cops. There's nobody to police this type of stuff. So it is frustrating that I'm gonna be a neighbor and have to pick up the phone every time something happens. Parking, as you said, in Sutton's Bay, Leland is a huge problem. What I'd like to point out on this is that the OAB right now has four lots to their name right now, where they do their activities. They've had activities on that property with four hundred people. Where do these people park? They are accumulating eight other lots. Where are they going to park then? I'm not sure why they're not being required to take some of that property and make it into parking. If a new commercial development happens and it's new commercial property, the rules state that they have to provide parking. If you're grandfathered in and it's old commercial, you don't have to provide parking. Not the best of rules, but it is the way that it is. I appreciate you listening to me and it is frustrating as a resident that my rights are not being protected. I've been sent earplugs in the mail. I've been called a NIMBY. I've been told to sell my property. I've been told to move out of Leland. It's a hard thing. I appreciate your time and for listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Any other public comment this evening?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Mills. I'm the director at the old art building. I just want to say thank you to all of you for your work. And I realize a vote has happened, but I, I do want to just speak to some of the things that, that you have said to, one, let you know that it has been heard and to also let you know that a number of those issues that were brought up tonight, where you were asking for some assurances and Brian could attest to that because he's sat in a lot of meetings, have been addressed, not only over the course of this application, but they have been addressed by us as an organization over decades. And so we have three organizations that are a part of this. Two of us are nonprofit, the library is a governmental organization. We have a very long history in this community. We've never had a complaint. So questions about music ending, music ends. It's firm about the, the upkeep of the property. You could go by there at any point in time. We, we take this very seriously. We have volunteer boards. Our governance structure is, is very sound. So not only do we have internal oversight, but in this process, we were asked to provide oversight. So we've written in oversight. We've, we've indicated a willingness to have that. And part of the reason that we can speak confidently, knowing that's not an issue, is because in a hundred plus years, it hasn't been. And being a good neighbor is of, of a, just, I can't even really quantify how important that is to us. We rely on the community for support. You know, we are a community-based organization. So the food truck piece, the music, those are all pieces that the eighteen things that were referenced that have been removed were removed because of community feedback. They were also heavily supported by community. But in conversation and information we got in talking with neighbors, we said, we can back off on that because we hear you and we want to be respectful. To correct something that Lynn said, food trucks are allowed in Leland. There's just a process that you have to go through to apply for them. So it's not that they're not allowed. We've requested a total of nine days in a year across all three of our organizations. It isn't a significant part of who we are, but it is something that we believe absolutely that the community voice is important in and we're gonna adhere to that. So I, I, I wanted you to hear that. Also, we aren't commercial. We don't behave in a commercial manner. We're nonprofits. Parking, someone referenced off-site. We offer off-site parking. We have shuttles that take people. And we also struggle with parking. People arrive to an event and Vans Beach has already taken up all the parking in town. Our application Our application has asked that the township look at parking because we don't have the authority and the Planning Commission doesn't have the authority. We hope that through this application, we can be a corner of Leland that can offer more organization. It is a, it's a township problem. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we can move on. Staff comments? Commissioner comments?
I think the staff should be complimented by this body for the work he did in putting the workshop together. Thought that to be very informative, well organized. The presenters moved the evening along quite well, and there were some really good refreshments. But thank you.
I would just take a moment to echo those comments. Apologies, I didn't say something sooner. I know I said something after that training, but it was a very good night and we had a great turnout. It's the by far most attended one that I've been to, so thank you, staff. And then I'll go back if anyone else wants to have your comments.
So was it recorded? Well, so yeah, it's unfortunate that I find vacation that I planned for a year ended up right there. So probably conspicuous perhaps, but I'm sorry.
No other commissioner comments? I don't have any further comments, and with that, we can adjourn. Thank you.